Good evening and welcome to the Town of Cortumadera Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 22, 2021. Would you please call the role Adam?
Good evening, Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Now, at this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. We have a couple of attendees, but if you have a comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda, you have three minutes to do so. This is the public comments section, so you would raise your hand or you would email into publiccomment@tcnmail.org.
I'll give our attendees a minute to raise hands. No emails at public comments. There's a Q and A feature where you can also ask a written question within Zoom. I don't see anything there. It looks like there's a question for one of your panelists and no questions from attendees at this point. Peter.
Okay, you have a question. So before we get going, I'll entertain the question.
That may have been a mistake. Is this not the right time for us to comment?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with that said, we'll close the public comments section because we don't have anyone wanting to make a comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda. So we'll move right into our new hearing tonight. And it is titled, "438 Oakdale Avenue: A Retroactive Design Review for a Property Line Fence to Exceed Six Feet in Height Between 438 Oakdale, The Applicants, and 448 Oakdale Avenue." Mr. Boyle, the screen is yours.
Thank you Chairman Chase and members of the planning commission. Good evening and members of the public and applicants, neighbors. As Chairman Chase said, this is a retroactive design review application for a fence that exceeds six feet in height. Before, can everyone see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Located at 438 Oakdale Avenue. And this photograph here is taken from 438 looking towards 440 Oakdale Avenue. And the fence is the subject we're talking about this evening. So to give you a reference point of where this is located, 438 Oakdale is very close to the intersection of Oakdale Avenue and Eastman Avenue, located just away as southeast of Town Hall. The fence in question is roughly located here where the red line is shown. Again, Oakdale Avenue at the bottom of your screen, Eastman Avenue on the right of your screen, and then 438 is the applicant's property, a flag lot that has pedestrian access from Oakdale Avenue and actually has a vehicle access from Eastman Avenue via this portion right here, which is an access easement. 440 Oakdale is here. It also has a property line on Oakdale Avenue and actually has a property line on Eastman Avenue as well. The red lines are roughly the location of the fence in question.
And Phil, just for, it doesn't look like your cursor is showing up, at least not on my screen. I don't know if it is on anybody else's. There you go. There you, yep. Okay.
Got it. Okay, I got it. Thank you. That helps because I'm not, the laptop is there. Okay, so when we talk about design review, obviously, we talk about design review all the time. I think this is the first one I've done here. This is design review for a fence. And our code says, one can put a six-foot fence on a side or rear property line and a four-foot fence on a front property line, generally speaking, without any process whatsoever. However, the code is also given some flexibility and it says, it gives an exception that heights may exceed six feet but not exceed eight feet. That is allowed if one achieves one of two things: written approval from all owners of the property contiguous with the property line nearest the fence or wall or hedge, and submit that to the planning department. That's option number one. Option number two is the applicant can seek to build a fence that's greater than six, less than eight, through the process of design review. So in this particular case, the fence is obviously already built. The applicants did not receive, did not provide clear written approval from the neighbors for this fence to exceed six feet. And so they have chosen the other alternative based upon staff's recommendation of going before you for the design review application for this fence to exceed six but not exceed eight. This has been a very long and a very long process. We've been, I've been working with both parties for many months, including as well as Adam and our code enforcement team and others trying to resolve this as best we can. So that's why we are here tonight to review this design review application for the fence to be between six and eight feet in height. How is a fence measured? So normally folks are dealing with buildings and buildings are more or less, you take the plane of the land, the slope of the land, and you elevate that up 30 feet. You draw a line in the middle of the air that's parallel to the ground and your building cannot, you know, go above that 30 feet. Generally is how we do with buildings and second-story additions, which you're all very familiar with. A fence is a little bit different. Per the code, a fence or a wall shall be measured vertically from the natural or finished grade, whichever is higher, at the base of the fence or wall to the top of the fence or wall. So that's straight from our code. So a little bit, a little bit different in measuring height. So these are two illustrations from the applicant's materials. And the point of this illustration, and this is in your staff report, more or less similar. The point of this is to illustrate what the grade was, documentation of what the grade was prior or at the time of construction of this fence. This is according, you know, this is according to the applicants. So as an example, this is, this is 440, this lower red circle is 440 Oakdale, and that piece of patio is elevation 89.8, according to the survey that they provided. On the other side, and this dark line here is the fence in question. On the other side of the fence is 89.0. So we're .8 feet lower on 438 than we are on 440. That's what's shown down here. So the next image to the right is illustrating how they came about, how they measured the height of the fence today. So they have taken the elevation of the ground, the high point of the ground, which is 89.8, minus 97.0, according to the applicants. That's their surveyor surveyed the top of the fence, and the difference of that is 7.6. So this is just one portion of the fence, but and you can see the illustration in the staff report, they did this all along, all sections of, or many, many sections of the fence. So this is just one example of how, you know, they've, they have provided documentation on how tall the fence is. This corner that we're looking at right here, and these two corners, is the same corner that I've shown on the very first slide, just to give you a reference point. Okay. So and then if you look to the right here, 5.8, 7.6, 5.4, variety of different other points of the fence and the elevation of the ground and how they've determined the height of the fence. Calculated the height of the fence. So in, just refreshing your memory of design review findings, I won't go over all of them, but some of the fundamental ones are, you know, does the project impact natural light, view, privacy? View, view and privacy. So those are, those are three of the, I think, total of eight findings. So one assessment is view and privacy. So in order to assess that, just like, just like I do with second-story additions, go to the neighbors, take pictures from the windows, take pictures from various standage points. In this case, I took pictures from the patio at 440 Oakdale. The, so this, this first picture to the left is from the lower patio, standing at my height, you know, roughly five feet nine. Here is, picture to the right is one step up, their patio climbs up the hill. This is the view from there. I do want to point out, at this point, we are, or the direction from staff is, interpretation of the code is that the commission is assessing whether the additional height of this fence, anywhere between six and eight, if that section of the fence impacts privacy, impacts natural light, impacts view. So it's not, not the whole structure because they could, if they chose to build this six feet all across, we wouldn't be discussing it. The only reason it comes to designer view is that it's over six and less than eight. I can't, the applicants may be able to tell you, you know, exact height of the lattice or these various pieces of the fence. But I just want to point out that aspect of the design review findings. So next, again, climbing up the hill, I've got a reference point for these in a moment. Climbing up the backyard a little bit of 440, additional views and privacy impacts. Mount Tam to the, Mount Tam here above Christmas Tree Hill and the hill above Larkspur, I believe. So in terms of reference points, here's where I took those photographs from. The first photograph, and I can go back if you'd like, first photograph is here from the lower patio, shooting straight across more or less northwest towards Mount Tam. So that's photograph number one. Photograph number two, this is, this patio is two foot, 92.7. This patio is 90.2, roughly 91.7, so maybe a foot higher. And then you gradually climbing up until that last photograph was off of their deck, which is shown as 99.6. So that's staff's assessment of view, impacts the views and impacts to privacy. Just to give a point of reference, here are some similar fences in the neighborhood. As I show on the staff report, this one is actually on the east, on the east property line of 440 Oakdale. And, and this is on the northern property of 438 Oakdale. So the staff is, staff is making a recommendation that the planning commission approve the draft resolution. Staff is able to make all the findings regarding design review in terms of natural light, view and privacy compatibility with the surrounding properties and so on, as articulated in the staff report and in the attached resolution. I will just mention in terms of natural light, as I put out the staff report, the orientation of these properties, I don't see that there would be a significant impact upon natural light to either one of the properties with the added, you know, one from six to eight additional feet. I have the designer review findings here laid out. If you'd like to have any questions or want to adjust any of those specifically, we can go over that. But that concludes my staff report and certainly welcome to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Phil. I appreciate that very much. So we'll go to the commissioners to see if they have any questions before we hear from both parties involved. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back and we'll discuss it as we've heard from everybody at that point. So, starting with you, Mr. Rizzo, I'd like to hear what your questions are for Mr. Boyle.
Phil, I had a question. Would you? One of the things that I was trying to determine was where the fence was before the survey was completed beforehand. Could you kind of show us on that, Matt? Like, yeah, because I know that, you know?
I, I can, what I could do is I could pull up the staff report. That'd probably be better. Because I don't, I don't have that image in, on my PowerPoint, but there is that exact image in the staff report. And let me pull that up. You know, there's high problems.
Also, why we're trying to pull that up is, is the jacuzzi a part of this discussion or is that going to be taken care of at a later date?
Thank you, Commissioner Rizzo. I'll clear that up. So back to the PowerPoint, if I would. Let me see the screen again?
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for that clarification. So as I mentioned before, 438 is relatively a normal flag lot. 440 is quite an unusual sort of S, I'll call it an S lot, S-shaped lot. So our code stipulates that a flag lot 438, for purposes of determining setback areas and yard areas, the front setback of a flag lot is the, the line, the property line nearest to be parallel to the street and closest to the street. So in other words, this one, call this the lower, the lowest part of the flag. So this is considered a front property line for 438. And this is also considered a front property line for 438. But we're not, not, this one isn't an issue. So there was an error in the, in the notice. And after further evaluate, evaluating it, we realized that the variance that they were asking for, and the hot tub is right here, more or less where my cursor is, and the shed is over here. In the notice, in the notice, it stated a variance is being requested to be, to encroach into the side property line by X, you know, certain amount of space. And that was incorrectly stated. It should, it should have said, the hot tub is there, the applicants are requesting a variance for the hot tub to encroach into the front yard setback. The front yard setback is 20 feet. The side yard setback in this case is five. So that's why, so when we discovered that and spoke with the applicants, I realized it would be best and cleanest and to withdraw, remove, should say, remove the hot tub and the shed variance requests and just focus upon, focus on fence design review. To the, as at this point, best of my knowledge, the, unless something changes, the hot tub and the shed applications for variances will come back at a later date.
And, and then the, I guess the jacuzzi and all that stuff was, you know, that, I guess we'll just talk about it at a later date. I was just curious if it predated the, predated the, the moving in of the applicants at 438 or if they installed that, not knowing where the property line was because there was a fence there originally kind of thing.
Is that all you have to ask, Mr. Boyle?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, all right. Margaret, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
It's not so much a question, but I just would like Mr. Boyle to explain to the rest of the commission, the idea that the costs involved in filing a retroactive design review.
Sure. So the cost for a retroactive design review is the same fee as for any other designer view. We don't have, there's no difference in cost. A major design review application, which this is, and that's an application that goes before the planning commission, the fee is $2,000 and that's a deposit. And regardless of the, of the size of the, of the addition or the project or the fence, $2,000 deposit for a major designer review to be processed by staff and brought before the planning commission. So there's no difference between whether it's retroactive or, or not. Another smaller design review that is just done administratively has a $1,320 flat fee. So just further on, so there's a $2,000 deposit. Once I receive the application, once we receive the application, we keep track of our time and record that. And if, if the application exceeds, if the fees and the staff time exceeds $2,000, we request additional before it exceeds $2,000, we request additional funds from the applicant and they pay those and continue on. And conversely, if the project gets finalized and we've only spent $1,000, they get $1,000 back.
There is an additional fee for the permit, isn't there?
So for, for the building permit, yeah. So, so what I just discussed was what we call an entitlement, designer view entitlement or planning entitlement. A building permit fee for as-built or something that's already been built is, depends upon the application itself or the project itself, but it's generally speaking, the, the fee is doubled. For the, and that's, and that's administered by the building department. And just following up on that, if, if this project, if this, if this design review application is approved and the fence is allowed to stay, one of the conditions that I've included is that the applicants will need to submit for a retroactive building permit for this fence, for any section of the fence that exceeds seven feet in height. Because the building code has determined that a fence that's seven, more than seven feet is a greater danger perhaps. And so they want to really make sure right-sized posts, right-sized holes, concrete, so on. So that's, so they may incur that additional fee if it gets to that point.
Thank you, Phil.
To answer your questions, Margaret, at this time? Okay. I'll go to Phyllis Metcalf. She has some questions.
Yes, I noticed there are photos of the old fence. They're photos taken from the neighbor's viewpoint. And I've been looking for photos taken that shows the base of the fence from the applicant's side. Do you have those, Phil? We see the old one that.
So this, this is the old one, and then it is addressed Mr. Rizzo's question. So this is provided to us by the applicant. And so, and the applicant may be able to speak to this more succinctly because they were there. But my best, my understanding is, is this, this portion here is roughly speaking, the location of the new fence. And, and then it continues straight and then it takes a left. Roughly speaking, so that gives you a sense of what grade was, at least at point of this photograph.
Right. But Phil, they created the grade. This is what I'm asking about. There was a grade made to have a planting area.
Some.
And that's what I'm trying to find out if there, in the packet that we got, I don't know if you have it for your PowerPoint. I don't see any photographs of the current fence from the Denny's side. I just see the photographs that were put, submitted by the neighbor from their side.
Well, the current fence from the Denny's side, and I can, I can go back to my PowerPoint, my opening slide shows that.
Just the one, but that's just one corner.
Correct. I do not, I, we do not have exhaustive, shall I say, or extensive photographs of the fence from the Denny's side all the way along. And I don't, we don't have, I have them in the file, but I did not give them in the staff report, extensive photographs of the fence all along from either, from both sides.
Okay. What I am trying to find out, or ascertain, is you can build a fence and then put up, you'll go out to a three feet, put up a wall, maybe a foot tall, and fill with dirt and do a planting area. That is not, that is wasn't, isn't a retaining wall as much as it is creating a planting, a raised planting area, which is fine. But if you create a raised planting area, I am asking, I think it's inappropriate, I am asking how this was done because I think would be inappropriate to measure the height of the fence from a raised planting area you created for aesthetic reasons. And that's why I wondered, do you remember what was in your pictures and your photos? Because there is a difference. The one that you showed at the beginning shows that the planting area is level with the bottom of the fence and it looks like the whole area is level. But I'm talking about an area such as this that we're looking at in this picture, the old one, or there's something in the staff report that also, yes, see, that one seems, you know, like it's fairly flat with the rest of it. The planting area. And I am saying there are other areas where it's raised. And that's what I'm trying to ascertain. You, you can't see it in this photo. If you could, I would have asked the question.
I'm going to interject here and I'm going to ask, or say to Phyllis that the, the property at 440 was higher to begin with than the property from which this photograph is taken. So that's a given that there is a level difference between the two properties.
But it isn't .8, it's actually .2.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm talking about when you look at the figures that Phil gave us in the beginning with the 80, what was it, 89? 9.8, okay. And at 89.0, okay, it was .8, right?
Yeah.
So that's eight tenths of a foot.
Right. So that would appear to be approximately what that planting area difference was. And I think it's just a matter of
Which planting area?
The one in that photograph before the fence was installed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So that, that was an existing condition where there was a differential between the two properties.
What I'm trying to figure out, that's why I wanted to see a photograph of how this was done.
And, and as I, and as I mentioned in the staff report, other indications of the grade difference between the two properties, you know, the finished floor of 440 Oakdale, per the records, is roughly 100 feet. And I believe the finished, the finished floor of 438 is roughly 90 feet. So there's, there's a pretty clear indication that, you know, the land, the landslide's down from 440 down to 438 and continues down to, you know, to City Hall, Town Hall, more or lesser, Towne Pies Avenue.
No, I understand that. I just wondered how it was created. That's all I was trying to figure out.
Yeah. And per, and per the applicants, they use, they use these numbers. They used 89, 89.8 and 89.0 and determined that, and based upon that, they told their designer, build, build the fence and build it, you know, using this as the base. And again, they'll, they'll correct me if any of this is, may not be using the exact numbers. But that's how they came up with determining, we're going to build this fence based upon the high grade, the high land on 440 as opposed to the low land on 438.
But
That's what the code says.
All right. Go back to that slide again, please. You look there, it's 7.6 inches to the top of the fence in that section. So they So they did go above. The six feet without any.
Yes, absolutely, there's no, no, no one, no one disputes that the fence exceeds six feet in many locations.
Okay, and the. Is, is that the top of the, the highest part of the fence? Seven six in that corner, is that the highest? Or the other sections that are higher?
Yes, there are sections that are higher, and that's included in the staff report, in one of the attachments, it's, it's exhibit seven B as in boy. And that shows the, the highest point of the fence is um. Is, is, is pretty close to four thirty eight Oakdale, um, to their house, and they measure it at eight feet.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Phyllis, at this moment?
That's all for now.
Okay, Dr. Bundy, I know you're waiting patiently.
I, I just wanted clarification that the height of the fence was determined from four thirty eight rather than four forty, is that correct, Phil?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's all.
And, and just, just to clarify, for, just to clarify, four thirty eight built the fence. So, and they were, and they were required to submit for design review, and so they were required to submit documentation. Of how high, you know, their, their fence is.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh. First off, uh, is you know, Philip, or if not, the applicant, uh, will respond, I'm sure. Whose property or where on the property line the fence is currently located, is it on the property line, is it on four thirty eight or is it on four forty?
Um, so according to, to exhibit seven C in, in the attachments, and this is. The, the attachments to the applicant's packet. Um, according to that, they, they provide a graphic that shows. The fence either on the property line or in some cases. Uh, point three feet off of the property line in, in towards four thirty eight. Um, so they, so to answer your question, I believe that the, the, the answer is, in portions. The fence, um, posts are on the property line, and in other portions, the fence posts are point three feet. Um, in, into the property of four thirty eight. I can bring up that graphic if you want.
That's right, I. Let's see it there. Um, would you go to the part of your staff report that points out the code? Height of a fence that, uh, there you go, okay. So in this case, the fence is sitting on the higher property and six foot is the limit there.
Correct, right, so this is, so in this case, you know, I, you know, this is, this is four forty. And this is, and this is four thirty eight. In my, yeah, graphic.
Four thirty eight built the fence, so that means that the six foot measurement should be taken on their side of the property. Not on the four forty side of the fence.
Uh, no, that's, that's not correct, accord, according to the code, doesn't matter who builds the fence. When one, when one builds a fence, one should measure the height of that fence. Based upon the high grade on either side of that fence. That's the way we, we interpret the code.
It doesn't matter then.
Doesn't matter who built it.
Or it doesn't matter whose property it's on?
Uh, I mean, you know, technically, the, the, the town doesn't get into, um. Well, in, in, in almost, in all, all cases, you know, it's a civil matter whether the pro, the, the fence is built on the property line or not. Um, that's, um, that's. Like, and, and maybe Ann, Ann can speak to that further perhaps, but, um, this is more addressing the, um.
Okay, so just for.
But with that, I should say, with that said, because we knew this was a contentious, we did have the, we did have the applicant provide a survey. As I, as you just, as I just mentioned, and that survey indicates where the fence is in relation to the property line. That's why I came up with that point, that, that point three feet off in some cases.
So hypothetically, say that they said, okay, we want to build a fence two feet in from the property line. The one foot in from the property line, they'd be able to go with the higher measurement? No. Okay, never mind the hypothetical on that, I, I think I answered my own question there, so. Um, the, you guys had measurements, uh, but the, uh, four forty, uh. Owners took photographs of, uh, measurements of nine foot and such from their side of the fence. Um, and so that would seem to fly in direct face of the. Four thirty eight measurement stated heights. Would that be accurate?
Um, I, I think it, it's accurate to show, to say that. Um, the height of the fence was taken from different points by different people.
Great. All right.
Peter?
Yes, Phyllis.
I just wanted to get something clarified, looking at the lawsuit judgment, it is clear that. Uh, any rebuild of fences should be built on their property, not on the property line. So if it was built on their property, why is part of it on the property line? Is there a reason because of?
I don't think we should, we, we, you can ask the applicants that, we shouldn't really opine on the legal judgment of the court.
Okay, that's, that's probably a separate.
Yeah.
Phyllis, so, um, we have, there's many questions that I would have that are outside of her purview in this instance.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, if it is on the property. On their property, then shouldn't it be, as you were asking and following up on it, shouldn't it be the grade? On their own property and not the grade, you start to ask the question and then never finish.
Yeah.
Rather, the grade of four thirty eight and not. Looking at the grade of four forty is the base, that's what I was trying to figure out when it comes to height for the variant, for the, uh. Design.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, I will just chime in here, the, the height of the fence, it, it doesn't refer to. Where that's located, it can be on property line, it can be on your property, it doesn't even have to be a property line fence, that's just saying how, that's how you measure fence height, so. You measure the, both sides of the fence, the grade on either side of the fence, and you measure from the higher, higher grade. It does, so whether it's, but, but I, I would also say, I mean. Typically, the town is not going out there and getting a survey for every prop, property line fence. You know, um, because it's close enough and, and, and. Whether it's exactly on the property line or, or a couple of inches off. You know, the vast, nine point nine percent of the time, that's considered a property line fence from a zoning standpoint.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I hope that answers both our questions, Phyllis.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so at this point in time, um, we will open it up for the applicant to, um, address. Uh, make a statement or however they would like to proceed, and if they've heard some questions from us that they would like to answer. I would like them to do so. Um, other than that, then after your presentation, we'll, we may ask some questions of you, and then we'll, um, hear from, uh. Four forty, so. Please. Take it away, I'm gonna time you, uh, I'm gonna give you plenty of time, but, um, if this starts to run on, I will ask that you, uh, wrap it up.
Okay, absolutely, thank you, thank you all for your time, um, we do have a PowerPoint that, um, we'll be sharing to kind of walk through this process, but. Just a couple of quick, um, questions I wanted to answer, um, so Phyllis, regarding your question on that. Um, kind of planting box that you saw, there was a, there, there was an existing condition there from when we bought the property. Um, of a retaining wall, uh, cinder block retaining wall that had been there when we bought the property, so it wasn't a, it wasn't a. Um, an addition in that case, and we had photos that we could, we could, um, show of that, but there was an existing retaining wall. Um, that was in place, but we then replaced with a, a wooden one, so I just wanted to answer that question. Um, and then in terms of the legal judgment, again, I know we don't want to get into this, but we could certainly speak to it. Um, it, it was absolutely a hundred percent not, um, the judgment of the judge that a fence would be built on our property. Um, it was actually, the judgment was just to remove encroachments, there were encroachments both on our property and on the four forty property. Uh, so the judgment was simply to, uh, remove encroachments and any, uh, landscaping. Uh, that needed to be redone on either side would be redone by those parties. Um, in the, in the, um, original temporary decision, it was determined that any fence would be, would, would fall under eight forty one, which is why we. We filed an eight forty one civil code, so we can go into that in our present, and we can talk about our presentation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, uh, let me find how I can show my screen here. Can everybody see my screen, okay?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Um, thanks again for this, I'm just again to go and Phil said, it's, uh, the purpose of today's review is a retroactive design review for our property line fence. That exceeds six feet in height, um, we'll just go through a brief project background. Um, the application request, um, I know Phil's covered a lot of this, um, and so, I don't know if it. If you guys like to ask questions along the way, um, please feel free, otherwise I'll kind of go through and you can ask questions at the end, whatever, whatever makes the most sense. Um, so just a brief background, I think we'll go into a little bit more detail of this, but. Um, just to give some history on, on how this came about, um, in August of twenty sixteen. A topical graphical survey was commissioned by the owners of four forty when they bought the property. Um, around May of twenty seventeen, we were finishing renovation on our property, um, have reached out to them to collaborate on. Um, replacing a lot of privacy screening that had been removed, um, as a result of, of the house being sold. Um, there and became a, about a year or so of conflict that resulted in a mediation conference. Um, in June of twenty eighteen that reached, uh, conceptual agreement, um, but that then, then was rescinded. Um, and then in twenty eighteen, a lawsuit was filed, uh, resulting in the bench trial and, and the judgment that you guys have as part of the packet. Um, talking about the property line encroachments that needed to be removed. Um, in spring of twenty twenty, um, we, uh, reached out again at the end of the judgment to. Um, collaborate on how to replace the property line fences so that we could all get our privacy back and kind of move on with our lives. Um, and we were told, uh, that the property, that the, um, neighbors at four forty did not need fences, um, between the properties. Um, and they weren't willing to discuss that, so in July of twenty twenty, we, um. Served a notice of civil code eight forty one, uh, provided to them to let them know that we were going to, um, move forward with building a property line fence. Um, reconstructing those that had to be, um, removed and, um, went about building the fence. At that point, um, and then provided a notice payment pursuant to the civil code eight forty one. Um, on September third and on, uh, the following day, a code enforcement complaint was filed by them with the town, um, and Phil kind of went through a little bit of that history. Um, in terms of the fence, uh, application. Um, that we based the style design and the height on previously agreed upon specifications with the neighbors at four forty. Um, who had actually at that point, um, wanted a higher fence than the one that we have built. Um, and we provided notice with the full scope and estimate of the work more than forty five days, um, prior to construction. Uh, we consulted with the town on understanding how to measure it to the points that, that many of you were asking those questions, we. Consulted with the town ahead of times that we knew how to measure it and where it should be measured. Um, um, due to the uniqueness of the properties, um, we hired the engineering company that. Uh, the four forty owners had hired to do their, um, twenty sixteen survey. Um, to come out and actually string the property lines so that we could ensure that the fence was built on the property line. Um, and again, asked our contractors when they needed to, uh, for contract, construction tolerances to air to our side of the property. Um, and, um. Then, um, we hired, uh, cloth construction to perform the work, which was a construction company that was actually a, a previous referral. Um, by four forty, um, our neighbors observed and engaged in the construction process daily. Um, inspecting it, measuring it, interacting with workers. Um, we commissioned DMG Engineering again to conduct a fence height elevation survey and the location of fence survey. Um, for the placement, um, and then, um, there, we'll show some photo, photos that the fence height is actually compatible with previous. But privacy screening that existed between the two properties, um, and in addition, the height and design is compatible with neighborhood characteristics. That conforms to the slope, um, that basically exists between Chapman and Eastman of Oakdale Avenue. So, um, we're gonna bring up the surveys that Phil shared, um, Brad is just gonna walk through, kind of, again, pointing out some of the, um. Points on the, the surveys, just to make sure that we had any other questions there.
Sure, uh, so really quick on the, uh, the property line fence, so this is a survey of the fence location after the fence was built. Um, so you can see there's portions of the fence that are on the line and portions, uh, like Phil mentioned that are approximately. Uh, four, three to four inches airing on, on the four thirty eight Oakdale side, so. Um, this fence is constructed of, uh, six by six posts versus four by six posts, right, we were very. Uh, we consulted with, uh, the fence contractor, uh, because we knew that the fence would, uh, would, you know, exceed sixteen in, in height. Um, we took the recommendation on it being a six by six post, so when you measure and survey, right, a sort of, a property line is infinite, right, it's. It's, um, it's kind of a zero, so when you, so this survey is taken based on that center of that post, so. Um, when you see, we, we asked the contractor, because there's certain tolerances in fence construction, right, you're dealing with land. Uh, and, and on this, a very complicated topography. Um, so we asked the contractor, hey, just air on the side, a caution on, uh, and if. When you're building the fence and you can see there that they did that, and in the locations where it errors, it errors toward our property, but. It is a property line fence, the, there's a portion of every post that is actually on the property line, right? These fences are intended to be built with the center of the post centering on the property line. Um, so this, this is, uh, what you see on the screen here. I'm not assuming anybody can read any of these numbers, but we wanted to give a little bit of context on how we set. The multiple heights of the fence, right, so as we said, it's a complicated design, the fence steps up, uh, with the property. So you can see what we did here, and this is in the designer review package, is that we, um. We kind of color coded it, right, so you could see on the left, the, on the left, uh, bottom left of the left. And set fence height survey, you see the yellow, so that core, those fence heights that are measured there, the six foot and six foot eight. Correspond to that yellow ninety one point four three elevation, right, and then you've got the eighty nine point eight. Uh, is that middle section, and then you've got the ninety one point three is that purple section, kind of as, as things step up to the property, right? So that's, that's how we get it, we, we looked at the, the adjacent finished grade of the patios that are, that are up against the fence and. And assuming that, that, that was essentially where the, where the occupant would be standing on the opposite side of the fence. You know, measured, uh, built the fence from there, so at any point in the fence. Based on where you're standing on the patio, the height of the fence changes, right, it's a very, um, the patios aren't necessarily flat, as you can see. Um, and even in the main patio, you've got eighty nine point eight, and then the bat, the middle of the patio is, is ninety, and the back of the patio is actually. A whole foot higher than the front of the patio, right, so if you look at the measurement of the corner of the fence from the back of the patio, it's actually. Six foot six, so we, we kind of, that, that, that's how we ultimately determined, uh, the height of the multiple, uh, tiers of fence. Go ahead, next slide.
So then this is just showing, um, uh, and this is just, uh, previous to, um, the four forty ownership. Um, but we have photos that go back to two thousand eight when we, when we bought the property, as we said. Um, but this is just showing that there was, um, existing privacy screening that actually went well above the height of the new fence. Um, and then, um, the, and just wanted a good view of, uh, even the fence itself that was there before was also above a six. Um, and then, um, the, and just wanted a good view of, uh, even the fence itself that was there before was also above a six foot fence. Was a taller than six foot fence and then had this additional privacy screening. Um, and then here when the, uh, the. Privacy screening had been removed, um, they actually found this chimney here and, and behind the brush. Um, and then here shows the existing fence so that you can, um, just see a comparison. Um, and then this is just quick, um, going through, uh, so going from Chapman to Eastman. Um, on Oakdale as, as I think Phil and Brad both mentioned, there's a, a grade that goes up from Chapman to Eastman. So these properties are lower than these properties. Um, so again, just showing within the neighborhood, uh, the design and height. Of fences, um, starting at the Chapman side, um, similar, uh, wood with lattice fences. Um, ranging in height anywhere from eight to ten feet, um, including the fence, uh, as pointed out between four forty and the four forty-four neighbor here on the corner. Um, and then in addition, uh, the fences between the properties that go, um, from Oakdale to Manzanita. Um, just showing that those are, uh, similar design and style. Um, we just, we want to say how much we appreciate the time, um, and effort of the town and the commissioners in going through this. We know it's a lot. Um, we've been, we've been going through this for quite a long time as well. Um, we approached the design and construction with our best effort to ensure that we met our obligations under the law and with the town ordinance. Um, we respectfully request approval of the existing fences built, um, and feel that the findings in support of our application are, are readily made. Based on information provided and, um, look forward to answering any questions you guys have.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to go back to the commissioners. And see if anybody has any commission or any questions for the applicants. Uh, Phyllis, do you have any questions for these guys?
Uh, there was one picture that showed a corner in the backyard, I guess. If you can go back a couple. Maybe it was one of Phil's. It might, it may have been one of Phil's, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
But you are showing, it's like in here. Uh, which shows two oh two one, the date. You have that one little section that's really the corner where you seem to go up, what, six inches? Six inches, yeah, that section in there. Rather than just have it level in both directions and I get, you know, in the two, uh, parallel, you know, two corners. The two sections that meet in the corner. And I think in one of Phil's pictures, you've got just one that sticks up all the way. And I'm just wondering why you just didn't. Follow the line, because you go back to the same line. It's like, it's like three sections, maybe four. Yeah.
Do you mean here? Yeah. Yeah, so the, the grade, let, let me see if I can use this, this little pointer here, if you can see the pointer.
Yes, I can.
The grade, um, and you can see the, the retaining walls here. So the actual grade is. Just slopes down. I mean, it steps, right? If you, if you look at, so it comes. Steps down respective to how we step the fences down, the actual grade does. So with the, the bottom of the fence, you know, that sections of it actually kind of have to be flat. Um, but we, we just followed the grade down from this upper corner, which is multiple feet above the lower corner. So the dirt on the opposite side of the fence here, you know, is, is, um, we could go to the survey to give you an exact measurement. The multiple feet above, you know, the dirt that's over.
I understand that the corner area is higher. What I'm asking is. Why not make the total height of the fence lower? So you stayed with the, I don't have a pointer, the same piece across, rather than have one, two, three. Like four sections that seem to be higher than the others where you could have just followed, it could have been, the top line could have been even, how's that?
Well, if the top line was even, it would be even up at this level.
No, it could have been, you could have made the fence not quite as tall.
Oh, okay, yeah.
See what I'm saying? You could have lowered the total height of the fence rather than six foot, uh, plus the trellis area. Up from the grade itself.
Right. I didn't, yeah. So are you, just to make sure we're understanding your question. So, uh, put the, put the cursor, uh, says right, right there on the corner though. So you're saying that section right there, the question is, why didn't we take that elevation and just take it all the way to the corner, the lower elevation?
Yes, on both sides. That's, that's all I'm asking is.
Yeah, that's about the question.
Top of the fence was level.
Right, right. So if we did that, the, the last three fence panels that you see there that kind of step up. Ultimately, by the time you got to the corner, the fence height would be like three feet. So if you were standing on the opposite side of that fence, it would be up to your chest, right?
This is where Phil, Phil took the pictures from the opposite side. He showed you the photos he took from the, the patios on that side. That's where those step up to here. There's actually, yeah.
So maybe Phil, I don't know if Phil can share a screen back to the photos that he took.
Yeah, Phil, you had one photo. Where it seemed to be fairly even and there's one section that stands up by itself. In the, taller than the others in the corner, and then when you go to the. Other side, it's lower. Not that one.
So are you asking for the photographs that I took assessing the views?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, here. You see how there's this one that just stands up all by itself? Which I am assuming is the other side of your photo. That, that the, uh, Denny's are showing.
So, so this, you're talking right here, Commissioner Metcalfe?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, at this, so at this point, at this point, the fence, at this point, the fence takes a ninety degree turn. And, and it goes and, and goes and goes north.
And I am saying that if it has to be that high. Before the ninety degree turn. Then it could be a foot lower as soon as you make the turn. It, it's this one that just kind of juts out and I'm asking why?
Why, why is this particular panel, this panel here, why does it jet out?
Why didn't they just make?
I could, I could try.
Of the fence itself lower so that the top of the fence matched.
So my, my, my response is, my, my response is they certainly could have, they could have built it that way. And I think, I, I think I'm accurately pointing out that this panel right here is sitting on the dirt. Which is the highest elevation of, um, the fence. So at this, at this point, I believe this is, uh, you know, this is the highest point of elevation. Um, of, of the grade where this fence lies. From this point on to my, going off to the right, now you start falling down the hill in another direction. The, the applicants could correct me if I'm wrong.
Phil, could, are, are any of the, what are the fence heights there?
Yeah. If, if you'd like, we can go, we have the.
The survey, the thing that, yeah, the.
Go everywhere.
If you go back to that, I think you'll find.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can give that right here on, on my piece of paper. Um, so that, that corner, according to the applicant's documentation, that corner is six point six feet tall. That corner of the fence. So that, that oddly enough, that is not, uh, that is not the highest. That is not the highest point, that, that is not the section of the fence that is the tallest.
No.
And it's the section of the fence that's highest in elevation.
I was just talking because it, because again, uh, uh, legal height is six feet, right? So the, the only thing we're discussing here is anything over six feet, between six and eight feet.
Right.
Okay, anything else, Phyllis?
Not right now, no.
Thank you. All right, uh, Margaret, are you there?
Uh, I'm here.
Okay, there you are.
I have a, uh, my question is just why are we looking at that this retroactively? Why, why, why didn't you get this taken care of? Uh, good, got permission or design review when you were supposed to, rather than just put up the fence? Why are we looking at this retroactively?
Um, so, uh, we, we couldn't get written permission. There's obviously, um, some contention between us. Um, and so we thought that we, that the neighbors have, um. Over a period of time and even, I think with this commission hearing, um, approved a seven foot fence. Um, and so we built that seven foot fence based on, um, the grade of the property. Um, and there's retaining walls that are in that, um, and they have contested, um, where the fence is measured. Um, so, so I guess that the, the, the answer is we thought that we were, we thought that we were within, we spoke to the town. We understood how to measure it, um, and we built it based on what we thought was, uh, the agreed upon, um, condition, style and height of the fence. Um, and, um, and again, they were there every day while, while it was being built. Um, and didn't say anything about the height of the fence, um, until after.
So you, you decided to build it based on, you're saying, based on the information you were given from someone in the town?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, you said you seem to think that, or, or at least what I understand that you just said. Was that you decided to build the fence because you were thought, you thought you were within. The instructions given by someone in the planning department.
Our, our understanding, yeah, our, our understanding would be, would be an acceptable height and fence design.
Well.
Measurement.
And, and how we measured it, yeah.
A, and based on the, what you, uh, sorry, I'm just going to jump in here, but, but you also said based on. What you thought was an agreed to height.
And what gave you the impression it was in agreed to? What evidence did you have that the other, uh, homeowners had agreed to it?
Um, as we said, we had, we had previously, uh, collaborated and talked about the design, the height and the style of the fence that would be. Uh, replaced.
And where did, was that, uh, ever put in writing?
Yes, it, it, there is an email that is attached to our application. It wasn't at the time that we were building this fence, um, but then we submitted to them a notice with the exact specifications of, of the fence that we were building. That matched that.
So, okay, back up. You submitted to them a notice of what?
Eight forty, it's a, it's called civil code eight forty-one, so replacing a property line fence. Um, you are required to give notice more, thirty days prior to starting construction.
Right. Okay. And in that notice, did you specify the style and the, uh, where it would be located?
Yes.
And the height at every point, as you pointed out here, and did you specify you'd be asking for half the cost?
Yes.
And did they, did you, uh? When you, when you are asking them for half the cost, did you tell them what the cost would be?
Yes.
And did they agree to pay that?
They have not.
No, did they at the time you submitted to them? And so why did you go ahead and do it?
I'm sorry?
When you were going to ask them for eleven thousand dollars, why didn't you get permission? From them to go ahead and build it?
But because the, the, I guess I'm, I'm, so there is a difference between asking for the cost of the fence. And asking to build the fence. So it's, that, it's our.
The cost of the fence, you, you, you built it with the expectation that they would pay for half of it, is that right?
Uh, we built it with the, um.
Need for price.
Well, we built it with the, with, so legally for it to be a property line fence by the California Civil Code eight forty-one. It is a shared fence. We had to, so we had to file the code. We had to follow up with the code. We have to, we had to do everything legally so that we had a legal eight forty-one property line fence. Um, that, part of that includes the fact that the cost should be shared by both parties. We have not demanded their payment, nor have they paid us anything for the fence.
Margaret, I'm going to jump in here and say that we, um, we are, uh, sort of exceeding our purview here. And that our purview is to determine, uh, the process for six foot or higher, you know, design review here. So that's what we're after.
Thank you.
Um, we, we can't get the, far afield into the who did what, when and so forth. Our job is to, uh, go after that. Um, um, Phyllis, what's your question?
I wanted something clarified because, uh, Mrs. Denny is saying, Ms. Denny is saying. That they submitted something in writing to the neighbor, correct?
They did, but that's.
And I am saying, design review. No, that, that is not our purview, but reading the staff report, design review says. If the code states the fences can be constructed up to but not exceeding eight feet in height. If a written approval from all owners contiguous with the property line nearest the fence is submitted to the planning director. Or design review is granted. Did they have written approval from the neighbors?
No.
Because that's what we're, look.
No, that's why we're here, that's why we're having this hearing, right?
Okay, so there was not written approval that was needed.
To our, not to the satisfaction of the town, right?
Boy, okay, that's what I was trying to understand when I heard written review to find out which direction it was. Thank you.
Okay. Um, with that said, Margaret, is there anything else that would sort of fall into the height issue that we're trying to resolve here? Okay, um, I'm going to go to, uh, Dr. Bundy, uh, who's over there. Do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, the, I guess the old fence was taken down because it was, the, needed to be replaced, is that correct?
Yes, it was on, um, it was not on the, uh, true property line. Um, so as a result of the, uh, previous, so it was a fence that it had built forty, fifty years ago. Um, and wasn't sitting on the true property line. And so as a result, we needed to remove it. It, it skewed. If you guys can see me, but instead of being straight, it skewed this way. So it encroached, um, slightly on the four forty property and slightly. On the, slightly on the four thirty-eight property and more so on the four forty property. So in order to straighten that out. We had to remove the fences and then replace them.
You, you indicated the, the height and the privacy screening associated with the prior fence, uh. Uh, was, uh, similar to what the new fence is. Were there any measurements taking, uh, taken on the, uh, uh, old fence?
Uh, no, it was a six foot board fence and then it sat on, um, a baseboard. So you could probably look at it. Um, I think it was like a twelve. So there, there weren't actual measurements taken, but you can see from the photos, um, what that is. And then also, that's why we put the comparison picture. So you could see, um, how much of the four forty house was, um, was visible, um, versus it, what's visible now with the new fence.
And the vegetation that was there that was contributing to the sense of privacy, that had to be removed as a result of realigning the fence?
It was removed, um, by the realtors who sold that house. So we, it was removed, uh, prior to, uh, the new owners, um, and it sat that way for, uh, for quite a while.
No more, no further questions.
All right, thank you, Bob. Uh, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions, uh, for these applicants about the height of the fence?
Um, no, I don't really have any, um, you know, questions other than the ones that were already asked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so. I've been timing this and I'm going to stop the timer at this point, um, so, and then we're going to turn this over to. The vehicles here to, uh, make their presentation and the rebuttal of this, uh, presentation. From the Denny's, so, um. Welcome to the.
Sorry.
Yes.
I think there may be, there, it looks like there may be some other attendees as well, so you may want to just open public comment to all.
Okay. Yeah, yes. So.
Just open public comment.
Yeah, we're going to open public comment, but we'll start here with the.
Yep.
Eagles, so, okay. Please, uh, if you have a statement or you have a screen to share or whatever you'd like to do, please go ahead.
Eric, thank you for having this meeting. Um, I'm David Teakle, it's my wife recently. And, um, I'd like just to introduce the, the, this situation. Um, we moved in in two thousand sixteen in April. Um, and in April of two thousand seventeen, we had a conversation. Um, and in April of two thousand seventeen, we had a conversation with the Denny's, our deck about the property line and the fence, and at that time, I'd already bought fruit trees, evergreen fruit trees to put on the property line along with a new fence, which we offered to pay for and build. And we were greeted with a change in character and it was a character that's kind of been exhibited in the, in the application that Denny's have, have sent forth. So we read it and, uh, were insulted by it, but, um, I think it's necessary to identify that the area that we're speaking of, we're looking at these fences. This is from our deck and our second patio and our bottom patio. This is the corridor by which we look at Mount Tampias. There's also the, the most sun-rich area of our backyard. So you may have already heard my tone of fruit trees, I like growing fruit on fruit trees and vegetables. And as you go down in our backyard, you arrive at the most sun-rich area, so that kind of introduces the, the, the situation, um, the six-foot original fence that had been removed because it was encroaching, um, encroach ninety-two square feet and it mostly took place down at the bottom where we have our bottom patio. And there's about a four to six foot dirt area from the base of the fence leading up to our patio area. So I'd like my wife to, to take from there, thank you.
So, um, so I think I would love for Phil to bring up the circles because there was a lot of discussion about this particular corner of the property. So the back, is that possible, Phil?
Yeah, I'm sorry, which, which image, uh, Reese, would you like?
That, uh, commission, Commissioner Phyllis was, was looking at and asking questions about, so, um, in our lawsuit.
Before you go on, I, I just wanna make sure I have the right one, was this in the staff report or my PowerPoint? PowerPoint, thank you. So Reese, you're, you're cutting out audio for me at least.
Yeah, I'm not able to hear you, there you go.
In the lawsuit with the Denny's, as my husband spoke about, there were ninety-two square feet of encroachments that Brad Denny had built. And while he claims that he hasn't, he did admit in court specifically with this corner between the eighty-nine and the eighty-nine, that he had actually built the encroachment fence that was about waist-high and see-through. It's a pole fence with like a couple of boards, so we could always see each other since we moved in. But, sorry, back to the circles. So what's important to talk about when we're talking about grade and where the Denny's claimed that they measured their, their construction of the fence from, between the two circles, um, do you see between the sort of like slashed lines and the concrete patio area? That whole area as well as where your, yes, where your mouse is to the left and to the right. That is actually where the Denny's used to have the fences that were encroaching on our property. And so that was their lawn. And so it is odd to us that in measuring grade that you wouldn't measure it for what used to be their lawn. So in the pictures that we submitted in the application of our measurement, my husband is standing on what used to be their lawn, we have not touched it since and it's over nine feet. And so it is odd to us that the Denny's would say, and especially because Brad Denny is in construction, he's a VP at Webcore, that he would have a well-renowned construction company or fence company stand in our concrete patio and measure that and take that as grade. It is very odd to us. Um, other parts of their application, and I'll just address some other areas beyond grade, but in other parts of our app, their application, they claim that we raise no concerns. That is not true. In your packet that you have received, there is a letter from us on July eighteenth, prior to the construction of this fence that states that they, they cannot encroach on our property. The fence must be placed entirely on their property. Therefore, we did contest their plans before the fence was built. So that is another mistruth in their application. There is another mistruth in their application. They claim that we, in the space that we're talking about, uh, between the red circles of what was their lawn, they claim that we actually lowered the elevation so that we could file this complaint to the city about what grade was. These are a lot of really negative and mistruths that are surrounding this application. And we just really, really wanted to bring to light those concerns. I have one more to speak about and then I'll, I'll turn it back to my husband. But we started this conversation that there was a lawsuit about the Denny's creating encroachments and building on our property. This fence has a shaved off or softened corner that is referred to in their application, there's no explanation why. That softened corner, it is, it looks like a hard quarter in this pic depiction. But really, could you show it from the Teakle side? It is, that is an indention, but it is softened, which means it's softened on the Denny's side, which means it actually encroaches on our side. Because they wanna be able to see around the corner, they have introduced another encroachment, which we just got out of a three-year lawsuit to please stop encroaching on our property. So in addition to that, in the lawsuit and in the July eighteenth letter where we said we're not paying for the fence and you cannot encroach on our property. And again, they built this fence in August, September, so this was in advance. This was in advance of their bill. We stated that you can't encroach on our property, but the footings and the, the concrete footings of this fence currently encroach on our property. Finally, in the third explanation of an encroachment, they created, and again, Phil, I don't know if you have the pictures from our side of the property, but they built retaining walls that retain nothing on our side of the fence, which are on our property line. There's, uh, yes. Uh, no, you had it, Phil. Um, but in the pictures of the patio, you might be able to see them. Right there, he doesn't have those, he doesn't have our pictures. But there, on the left there, there, on the left picture, you can see that softened corner and you can also see those retaining walls that jut out. There's nothing there, there's the lawn from the Denny's that touches that, that used to be their side of the fence, but it's our property. Those who retain walls were built on our property, they retain nothing. We really, really want this to be done correctly. And there are so many encroachments, there's no need for this fence to be approved. I'm gonna let my husband wrap up, but I have certainly said quite a bit.
Okay. All right, um, did you touch?
Oh, yes, sorry, there's one more thing. Ms. Denny keeps speaking that the fence is in section eight forty-one. In your packet, you have numerous statements from us that were co-written from our attorney that state this is not a section eight forty-one fence. The fence, a portion of the fence was supposed to be removed because of the encroachments and the lawsuit. It, this fence was a replacement fence. And we never asked for an entire three sections of fence to be built. They were supposed to remove their encroachments and they built this. So it is not an eight forty-one fence, hence this fence should have been built on their property, it is replacing an encroaching fence from a lawsuit. Now I'll turn it over to you and we'll wrap up.
Hello, Phil, you can leave that picture up because I was actually gonna, um, talk about this situation in the picture. Um, as you can see, um, there are some fruit trees there, no surprise, and I have vegetable garden there. Um, the shadow that's cast ironically in this photo shows that there is indeed a loss of light, which is a very important thing to us at our property, where we intend to stay for a long time. So, yes, there is sunlight loss due to the height of this fence. Um, I'm gonna like to close, you wanna have anything else you wanna say? All right, so we would like to close by simply asking that the town uphold ordinances to protect property owners and keep the Denny's from constantly building our property, even after being ordered to not do so by judge in a court of law. Thank you. If any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, this is public comment section, um, but, so we won't, uh, get into the questions at this moment, um, but we may afterward. Um, I'm going to see if the attendees, uh, which there are four tonight, um, wanna put up their hand and make any comment. Or if anybody wants to use the chat function on Zoom, uh, or if anybody wants to email to publiccomment@tcmail.org. So here we are in public comment, do any of you wish to, uh, put your hand up and make a comment?
Thanks, Peter, this is Tracy, I, I don't see any raised hands, but I'll, I'll give them a mo- a moment here and I'll check, uh, for email. Don't see any, any email that's come in and no, no open questions on the Q and A.
Okay.
And no raised hands, as you can probably see.
Yeah, thank you, all right, I'm going to, uh, ask the commissioners if you, uh, uh, remain, uh, aware of brevity and, uh, if you have any questions for the respondents to this, um, I'll start with you, uh, Mr. Rizzo. Do you have any questions for these folks?
Yes, I, I've, I've got a question, so, um, as this fence was going up, um, were you aware that it was gonna be over the six-foot mark when a few sections were in and did you bring it up to their attention or the, the towns at that time? Or, or did you wanna see how it was all put together before you made a determination if you were gonna like it or not?
You're muted, I think.
All right, um, several things, in the plans that the Denny's sent to us, it says, and, and you have a copy of it in your packet from Cloud Construction, it does say it's going to be a six-foot fence in a one-foot lattice. However, in your packet, you have the photos from us that show that on our side of the fence, it's over nine feet. So, um, we were not aware of how tall the fence would be, um, as it was nearing the end, or I guess as the posts were going up and when we were seeing the process, we did bring in our attorney and it, we were having conversations more along the lines of is it even supposed to be on the property line? And Maya, it does kind of look tall. And our attorney said that we would not be able to say anything until we could bring it to the city. And so we did bring it to the city as soon as we were able to take the measure, measurements, so on and so forth. But, um, that is the reason why we could not sort of stop it mid-stream. That was the guidance from our attorney as well as, um, we really didn't see all of it, um, until we saw all of it.
And so, but, but you had mentioned something about the foundations for the posts that were on your property line, and at that point you were not happy with it being halfway on your property and their property, but you allowed that to happen. You didn't bring that up at that time, I'm just kinda curious, I, I wanna know the timeline of everything, so. Okay, and then, um, the, the property, uh, just the, I got one more question, the, the fence to the east, is that your property, uh, uh, or, I mean, is that your fence or the neighbor's fence?
So that's where the neighbor's fence, that was in existence before we got here, that is, um, the north part of our yard, under an oak tree, very big shady shade providing oak tree. And there's retaining wall and a fence on top of that, that was built before the, our neighbors even moved in.
And that's in our backyard.
But you don't have a problem with that height, even though it's over six feet?
On our view corner and there's not much sunlight for growing, um, it was existing, we didn't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you, sure.
All right, Phyllis.
Yeah, uh, I'm good, Jim, are you talking about the picture of the fence that's marked fence number one?
Sorry, Phil, I'm on the laptop, I don't have everything up, um.
Oh, okay, I am looking at a picture that's marked fence number one that is part of our packet.
Mm-hmm.
And it shows the fence being measured and then it shows there's a large garbage can and an old fence that's even higher than the side fence, is that what you were talking about?
No, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, page eleven of the staff report, uh, the, the, uh, the agenda packet. Um, there's a, a face on the eastern property line that's, that looks like it's about nine feet two as well. And I'm just, you know, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, I see, yeah, I'm looking at a different one, okay.
So, yeah, there's, there's, there's another fence on the property that is very tall and I just
Yes.
wanted to get their opinion on that fence as well while we're looking.
I agree, I agree with that, but there is another one in the, this is part of.
The perpendicular in the front or the back?
No, wait, it is not in the part of the, it's part of the attachments. And it's attachment number two, I guess, attachment A. And it's corner of fence and then there's fence one, bench two, et cetera. It's part of attachment A. And there is a fence that's an entirely different design, it's horizontal boards. It's gray enough that it has aged.
It's.
There's no ceiling.
The, the, yeah, that one is, um, I, I know what you're wondering, talking about, that's how I entered the property from, from the driveway.
Okay, and I am saying that is not only just as high, but actually higher.
Yes, slightly from what I, uh, what I saw.
So I will ask uh, the neighbors, that is no problem for you, that fence?
This is our, uh, side yard fence, there's a gate to the left, it doesn't show up and that is six feet tall.
Well, if that is six feet tall, the fence line that you're measuring, I mean, you can see, I'm sure you've got your attachment in front of you, that you're measuring and reaching all the way up is probably six inches lower and yet you're showing it as being, you know, eight or nine feet.
Phyllis, I'm gonna interrupt, I'm gonna say, number one, he's, he's down by two full cinder blocks there. And that's going, so he's, he's at least sixteen inches plus.
Oh, I see that whole a- area is built up, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But also in, because I guess the Denny's questioned what I said and and I went back and look, it was an attachment D, your attachment. And what I had read was it is the attachment of the legal suit. And it states on the page, shows the lawsuit judgment, which finds that the owners of 438 Oakdale must remove their encroachments of 444 Oakdale, our property. And any rebuild defenses should be built on their property, not on the property line. So I went back and carefully read the legal judgment from the judge. And I don't even see any reference in it into rebuilding. I only see reference into removing. And maybe, I don't know if it's appropriate for Ann to say anything at this point, but I don't know where these opinions are coming from. And I know how to read this stuff.
I'm happy to win, Commissioner, and I think my way of doing it is going to be to tell you that you don't need to answer this question.
Okay.
I read the judgment. I read exactly what you read and I did not read exactly what you did not read.
Okay.
But be that as it may, the location of the fence is, is not the town's concern at this point. That the, look, the location is a matter between the two parties. They've dressed it in a lawsuit. Hopefully they won't have to go back to court to address it again. But our purview is just the design review. It's a question of whether or not the commission can improve the height and the location is not really of our concern. We could fight about, you know, property line fences and that judgment all day if we wanted to, but fortunately we do not have to.
Good.
Thank you, Ann. Yeah.
I mean, I, listening to the two couples and stuff, I, I wish I agreed with you that it won't go back to court. I'm afraid it will. No matter which way we go, I think it's, it's a very disturbing situation when people live next door to each other and have this type of dissension. And it's hard to make a decision, but the idea isn't looking at the fence. My concern is certain sections of it could have been more even at the top as far as design goes. And that's what I had been asking earlier, that it, there's a certain amount, and I mean, I keep, if we keep on going back from picture to picture, we're all going to get confused, even more confused. But there is that one section where it is, the area is up high and it makes the ninety-degree turn that comes right into it, and it's much lower. So obviously this, with the post is, it didn't change so much the height of the land, you know? And that's why I'm trying to think if maybe there can be some leveling of the total height without taking away the privacy of the Denny's. Yeah, and it's just a few, a few of them that don't seem to.
Of whether you can make the findings as to this design that they've applied to through your approval. If you can't make the findings unless they lower that section, I suppose that would be a reasonable thing to require. If you can make the findings based on this particular design, then not. That's totally within the commission's decision.
With the caveat that you, it can only be lowered to six feet, correct?
Yes, of course. That's right.
You can't go low, you can't, because they're legally, they're allowed to build a six-foot fence and we're not into design review then, so.
Okay.
Well, we're into seven feet.
I understand. I'm just making a point. I'm not.
Your point is it would be six foot, including what I call the trellis, the upper trellis.
Right.
Okay, just want that clear.
Okay. We're getting extensive here, so I'm going to see who else did I not call on? Did I call on you, Margaret?
No.
Okay.
Um, what I would like the neighbors to address is the impacts that they believe the view, the impact on their view above the six-foot height is of Mount Tam. How does that impact your view?
That is twofold. The first and most noticeable impact at any point in this view corridor, if you will, is a very large, massive fence. It's a large structure. That's not what we want to look at. We're used to looking at greenery, if not architecture of homes on down the waterfall of our view corridor. Now we have a very large fence to look at. The second impact is at the lowest tier of our patio. We have furniture where we car grade, not so much during COVID times, but hopefully more so soon. And when you sit down, you have less of a view westward towards the mountain. That's where the view is impacted.
And what we need to, I guess what I want, want to know specifically is the additional height above six feet. They're entitled to six feet, whether, no matter what it is, the additional height above six feet, is that of impact to your view?
We always said that six feet and a foot of lattice is absolutely understandable and fine. I haven't had the opportunity to look at a fence of these different heights to see what the impact is, just what we had earlier, which is a very low, mostly transparent three-foot fence. And now the, from our side of the finished grade, what is a nine-foot fence? So I can't answer very clearly, but we said six and a foot of lattice is understandable and fine.
Thank you, Peter.
And Dr. Bundy.
I did want to get a better understanding of the, this, the elevation at the corner. So the measurement of the patio, eighty-nine point eight, and then there's a drop-off as you go to the fence, because that was area that's just hadn't been filled in. There's a retaining wall, but it's your property and you haven't filled that in or anything's been done with that. Okay. And the issue of the corner and the softened corner is you're requesting this be a hard corner, a squared off corner?
Absolutely. Fall in the property line and ninety-degree clean crisp corner. I don't know if that's really going to be something the city takes up. That's, that's not really your matter, correct?
Not our matter tonight. Right, yeah.
No further questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to check with the attendees before we close public comment and see if anybody wants to stick their hand up in the air or chat or email. So let's see, five attendees. Nobody is sticking their hand up, but I can see.
Will we get a chance to say anything or just wanted to ask?
I'll give you a three-minute response. Yeah.
Leaders.
Yes, Phyllis.
Guys. Um, that soft corner, as you call it, isn't that making, I mean, a bigger deal out of something than you really have to? What is it, three inches out of the square? I mean, if this is the design of the fence with the soft corner, that is not harming anything. That is good design. Why take away from good design if we're looking at design review?
Okay, that's encroaching. That's why a problem, but that's not our purview here tonight. So that's, that's a matter for them to take up separately. So we can't really go after that. Okay, Denny's, you have three minutes here.
So we'll, we'll be quick. I don't think we need three minutes. We, oh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, my internet was looking like it. We have no intention or desire to relitigate in front of you guys. It's been a long time that we've been going through this. So we can say with a hundred percent absolute certainty, which is why we produced a survey that this fence does not encroach on the Teagle property at all at any point. And in addition, we very specifically made sure that that wouldn't happen. The softened corner that they spoke of, we have photos that it sits on our side of the corner property line. We designed it so that if they wanted to put a hard corner there, they can absolutely add that on their side. But it very specifically sits on our side of the corner of the property. So I know again, it's, I just, we want to, you know, make sure that, that the intent, the intent is clear. The fence does not encroach at all and certainly I believe that if they thought that it did, that they would be back in front of the judge and maybe that will be the case. But, but we had the survey conducted for that.
And, and just one more comment, you know, I can, just by the line of questioning, right? I think there's a lot of interest in kind of what was our intent when we built, when we built the fence. You know, we have views of Mount Tam as well, so we ensured that the top of the fence did not obstruct their views. As you can see from Phil's photos, it actually runs just below the top of our roof and below the top of the hedge that is on the other side of our lawn where the fence is. So we're, we're more than respectful of that and we did that when we, you know, and we took that into consideration when we built the fence. We also took the design. It was a neighbor-friendly fence, obviously of high quality. So we took that into account and we were very sensitive to the property lines to ensure that there was no encroachment issues. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to close. Any further public comment or any further commentary? And it's time for us to take this under consideration within the, within the commission. So that said, it's time for commissioners to pony up their views on this and we'll get through this after hearing from each and every one of you. So I'm going to start with you, Mr. Rizzo, and see what you have to say about this condition here. Can we make the findings to go over six foot?
Well, I think, you know, just, just sticking to the findings, natural light, privacy and view obviously are three of the most concerning. I, I did sit, had the ability to sit down on both properties, patios, to take a look at the privacy issues and, and the view. And I think that the, the Denny's are correct in that the, there is a pretty significant amount of that view that's blocked by the hedge, the roof of their, of their property. When you're down in, in, in a sitting view corridor. So there, there's a little chunk of the view that, that, that may be of concern in the corner, but the majority of it, it's not a sweeping view of Mount Tam. It's, it's a very kind of finite little view. And then I don't know how much extra shadow is going to be cast on another foot and a half into the yard. It looked like, you know, you might, you might gain a few more inches on the ground. I don't know if it's going to be significant enough to really to really help out a garden unless it wasn't, wasn't there at all. And I want to address the privacy issue. I really, I really feel that once you step on top of the Denny's patio, if that fence comes down two feet or a foot and a half in that corner, you're really, they're going to be looking at each other. So, I mean, I actually think it, it kind of works and I'm wondering if, if Riza and David, you know, would consider leaving it because they're, because of the privacy concerns. I know that they're going to both want their privacy, especially after the, what they've been through. But anyway, I just want to address the views and kind of stick to the, the findings of, of the code and if we wanted to allow this to happen and I didn't feel like it was so impactful that I wouldn't make the findings. If that makes any sense.
You're skating right through thin ice there, but that's okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to go over to you, Dr. Bundy.
Living in Mariner Cove, Tracthome subdivision with just straight lot lines, it's always interesting to me to get up on the upland side of Corder Madera and see just how these lots are laid out. Everything from a landlocked lot to the flag lots and the S-locks that we're discussing tonight. Light, privacy and views are the things that really drive the planning commission nuts from the standpoint of trying to address these. Certainly the privacy issue from 438 is the significant privacy issue. And then the discussion on the, the height, particularly at this corner, I think Phil, taking the measurements from the patio rather than the drop-off is the more reasonable approach to looking at the height of that from the, the standpoint of, you know, the reasonable use of that, that spot. I guess that is sort of the, the lower spot on 440 and there is some impact with light and there is some impact with views. But it's really just from that one particular lower part in the corner of their yard. And so while there are some impacts from, from light and views, I don't think they're significant. And looking at the fence in relationship to other privacy fences, fences in the neighborhood and especially on slopes, I can make the findings.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret.
I can't get past this picture of, that was in the report of Mr. Teak, Teagle? Is that, I don't, how to say the name, standing and I, and how much taller the fence is. It's actually about a third taller than his height. I, I can't get past that, that picture and say that the fence is not overbuilt for no other reason. And I think that there is an impact to the view, be it small, an impact of Mount Tam is a, a Mount Tam view. And I think there is some impact and, and I also can't get past the fact, the fact that this was put up and we're doing this retroactively because somebody got caught. And so I don't think I can make the findings.
Thank you for that. All right, Phyllis.
Okay, I'm looking at page 10 of Phil's report with the pictures I couldn't find before. And we get back to photo C, taken from the base of the stair leading to the raised deck and photo D, taken from the raised deck. And there is one section of the fence, one panel that is particularly, it stands out by itself. It doesn't make sense. And as long as it remains that way, I think it would be, should be lowered down to the panel next to it before the ninety-degree turn. I understand that. Which would probably be about close to 12 inches. I can't make the findings without that. Because I don't see where that one panel is necessary, especially when you make the ninety-degree turn. And I don't know if Phil can show the picture or not. It's so much lower. I mean, the land did not go down significantly on one side of the post from the other. Yeah, there. And you can see it's the lower right-hand corner. Just that one section just stands out unnecessarily. And I would like to see us ask that. And I don't remember Adam's exact wording, but that some, that the height at the top be more even as long as they don't have to go below the six-foot plus, yeah, the six feet. And with those changes made, I could then make the findings, but I cannot, the way it stands. And uh with those changes made, I could then make the findings, but I cannot the way it stands right now.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Okay.
Is that I guess the only, do you want that? Does the lattice, does the lattice or the matter at all, the way that it should it be?
I would like to see, I don't know who's saying that, it's floating around, is that yours, Adam?
Phil's.
It's my Phil.
Okay, if you start on left hand side, move it oh down the one next to it, right there, and it became a straight line.
Okay.
Yeah, so I
And and do the lattice below that the same as it is with the other panel?
Yes.
Okay.
So
In other words, the top of the fence
I understand, we understand.
As even as possible, if that could be added into the requirements for acceptance.
Yeah, we got it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um I'm going to um sort of respond to Phyllis a little bit and say that I think that entirety of the issue is before us. Um and that uh the Ticos um site measurement certainly stand out that the fences uh down in the corner egregiously higher than it ought to be. Um so for my part, I think that uh I agree with um Margaret, that this thing should not have been built this way to begin with. I I I know that somebody really extended this beyond where it was legally allowed to. Um that's my feeling about it, but I cannot make the findings for this uh fence structure as it is. And I would support the uh uh induction of the fence to the seven foot height with a six foot plus one foot lattice throughout the entirety of the fence height. And that the town would go out there and confirm what that is and uh and instruct the the um Denny's to do that, to lower it to that point. If only because this is a huge wall to the people and I think that that's uh injustice to them, to the property. I deal with uh these issues all the time and I I don't like that this becomes such a contentious issue that's really too bad. And and yet I would in the end think that the privacy afforded by such a fence would be a greater benefit, but um not at the expense of the loss of sunlight and the uh this this uh this impairment of view and just the uh loomingness of that fence over the four forty yard, so I cannot make the findings for the um at this point. So that would be my uh position on this.
Okay, does is there, oh, I'll let you call for a motion.
Yeah, so I would ask for a motion, yes, Bob.
Well, the uh proposal that Phyllis had, is that uh possible to vote on that as a motion uh lowering the panel that uh she was concerned at about or do that as the second vote?
No, that's fine, you can move, that's a, you can
I specified that panel, but I meant the panels all should be leveled out. That was the most egregious to me, so it goes along with what Peter is saying. It's a confident and Margaret that this is the fence is too high in parts, but the fence also is has places that loom up. So um I don't know, Peter may be able to say it better than I did. Put it on him to explain it that.
Well, I think that the
Or Adam, yeah.
You know, it seems that there was uh I I'm not even going to go to what was an apparent agreement in principle that a six foot plus a one foot trellis was originally acceptable to both parties. Um but I think that uh now I would say that a six foot trellis, I mean, a six foot fence with a one foot trellis would be what I would uh would set forth as the and it's a just the denial of the application essentially.
I think Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I I I think one of the things that we're going to confront here and have to face is is and maybe the commission can give some direction on this. Uh but we're we're dealing with sort of a a condition, we have to figure out where to measure the fence from. And so if we say six feet plus one, we're going to go out there and look at where the highest grade is, which side of the fence is hot, has a higher finished grade. And that's where we're going to measure from, so we're not measuring it from in the corner where it's looming from the Teakle side, from four forty side, we're measuring it likely from four thirty eight. And so that's the real critical uh determination. Uh and 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 if we're going to get into that, I think it would be helpful for the commission then to opine on if you are satisfied that we should actually use the way that the measured, and I think there were some comments about what was, it looks, Commissioner Bundy, I think, said that it actually measuring it from the pad patio was reasonable. We can do that, but I would like direction from the commission as to, just to be clear, that that is okay to do it that way, the way that it was done. So that we're not staffs in a position of sort of making that determination, because ultimately what we would do is we'd make our determination and then have to you know, that would be subject of sort of a a another conversation with the planning commission ultimately, so I'd like to just get them, yeah.
Adam, that isn't what I was saying. I understand what you're saying, I am saying that there may be parts of the fence that are eight foot, men should be, I'm talking about the height of the fence, it should be seven foot, but I am saying that the top of the fence should be made as level as possible, so some of the the boards would only be a total of six feet and some would be seven feet, looking at the uh plane, you know, the natural plane of the land. But it's not that you're going to measure panel by panels to say, oh, this is seven feet, this is
We do, we, that's how it's done, yeah.
Okay, so Phil, would you bring up your uh your dubious corner view that's on your front page of your staff report? Yeah, right there. So I would uh ask that the site be measured at this point for a six foot fence and a one foot um trellis overhead. And it looks to me like this is about um at least eight feet there, probably by the time you stand at the base of that fence, stick your arm up in the air, probably about eight feet or seven, you you measured it seven, six, Phil. But um I think
That was from the patio, that was from patio on the four forty side.
Yeah.
Right.
But is that the higher point? Because I believe the municipal code requires us to measure from the higher grade.
Correct. So yeah, I I would concur with Adam, if the commission chooses us or makes a decision that the fence be modified in whatever form, that your direction of modification specifically articulate, measure from where, from what grade? And I would really, I would really encourage, I really encourage the commission to not talk in terms of lattice or solid. Um because the code does not address those two factors. And I I don't know if we know how tall this lattice is, so I would really encourage the commission to come upon a decision of the um the maximum height of this fence, regardless of what its composition, unless, yeah.
Okay, so if you scroll down to the point where you have the two red circles and then that's uh elevation, right there. So this is where we're talking about, so.
Right.
Okay.
And we have the, we we have the measurements, the, go ahead, Phil, maybe you can explain, just once again, what this is measured, how this is was measured and in terms of what the exhibits were, because those are the only real measurements we have at this point.
Yeah, and I I would, I would definitely concur that this area here, this this gully, this border is lower than eight, nine point eight. I think we see that in the pictures, I think that is a given, but that is a fact and and um but but and again, the applicant has chosen to design and build this fence based upon this number here. And it's with the commi- and the commission needs to decide whether that's an appropriate place to measure from or not.
Because I think and and we heard tonight, I think that was because at the time of reconstructing it, that was, you know, the the actually fence cut across that corner near the patio. And so that was the sort of the finished grade of that patio compared to the other side, so but conditions change and the code has is also um recognizes that, so. The point is, if we were to go out there today strictly by the code, we would be measuring this corner height of the fence from four from four thirty eight, not from here, because it's lower not only than the patio, but it's lower than the eighty nine elevation on the other side of the fence. So if you go back, Phil, to the, yeah, so it's even lower lower than eighty nine, that the
Where was that this picture taken?
That picture was taken, um I believe, Miss Mr. Teakle was standing right where my pointer is, right here, roughly speaking. So he's standing in this, you know, in this is lower section and and measuring up.
But his his property is on a higher grade, correct?
Uh this not not where he, probably not where he was standing at that moment. This this point, yes, is higher and as you go up towards his house, yes, so it's you can't, it's their entire majority of their property is higher, the majority of four forty is higher than four thirty eight. I think I could say that again, the majority, not all.
Well, is there any part that's lower?
Right, that fence, yeah.
I I think it where Mr. Teakle was standing, he was standing at a lower, uh his feet were at a lower elevation. Yeah, I would guess, I haven't measured, but I guess that lower el- that elevation was lower than eight, nine point zero. But I don't know that for a fact.
I mean, wasn't that area the one that was re regraded for the fence? So it wasn't the actual natural grade?
It does, it 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 doesn't matter because the definition is natural or finished grade.
Right.
We don't know, and we don't, we're not, you know, we don't know who did what, be honest.
Well, we could find out.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna poll the commissioners here and just ask a a simple question. And I want you to respond quickly here so we can then move on to a motion. So it's either six or seven feet with or without trellis, so seven foot with trellis or six foot and what, you know, the six foot or seven foot um is a height, because I, then I'll make a motion ultimately here and I want to check with each of you, so um Margaret. Um six or seven foot.
Six.
That's Dr. Bundy.
Seven.
Seven. Phyllis.
No higher than seven.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo.
Seven.
Seven, okay. So I'm going to make a motion here uh that we have the grade measured from that eighty nine point eight and it's a seven foot fence.
But the property line shows eighty nine. Go back to that dot thing of Phil's.
Well, I just want to point out, Commissioner Chairman Chase, well, you'll, I, it would be much more helpful for, I think, all parties involved if you designate which side of the fence.
No, no, I think eighty nine point eight, eighty nine point eight would work, if that would be fine, if you want to measure it from the patio, which is what was actually done, that I think that works.
Right, so it's eighty nine point eight, that's the point on the four forty property.
But how is that, how does that address, say, the the height of the fence way up where where Ms. Metcalf was talking?
Well
That issue, what what grade we use on that on that part portion?
Uh yeah, I mean, I think, go ahead. I I think the way that it was presented was there were different elevations at different patio levels.
There are.
And so
The great
The colored, the colored um image that you had where the the different colors represented where the elevations were taken from, so I you could, you could say that should be the reference uh that we use to measure the the six plus one or the seven. And um and I would, that would be helpful to get that confirmation, so yes, Phil, I think that's correct, it'd be helpful to expand on um what Chairman Chase has said to make sure that we're measuring at all the different locations appropriately.
The the green, the green grade and the pink grade are different.
But but you, if you could show that image, you might want to show that.
Say that again, please.
Sure.
And and just
Sorry.
And I think just so um
Me here's
What I, what I, go ahead and 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 I think um I'll, I have a question for you after we get this clarification, but
Um so I'm finding the the exhibit presented by the applicants.
Right.
Showing the various, the various grades on the four forty side. I didn't pass it today.
Uh it might have been in
You can also have it on page seven in your staff report.
It's actually a more expansive, yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it's, yeah, I mean, it's actually on page uh seven, it's seven of your staff report, I think is close enough, I mean, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Side by side, elevations and and patio.
So is that, does that provide, so I'll I'll reiterate what the applicant said, so, you know, green, green is eighty nine point eight, green, the screen represents eighty nine point eight, green is ninety one, ninety one point something, purple is ninety one point something.
We're not seeing it yet, Phil.
Yeah, we'll see.
You're not seeing my
Share, you have to share your screen, yeah.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so there we can see that now.
Yes.
So so green in this image is eighty nine point eight, green in this zone is eighty nine point eight, according to the applicants.
That's the reference point, yeah.
Referen- reference point is ninety one point nine three for pink. So this section of the fence is measured ninety one point nine three and up. Uh gold is ninety four point one four and so on.
And so on, yeah, and I think there's a even a, one of the images that the applicant showed even extended further
Yes.
Uh more wide, but we could use that uh as the reference points.
The reference points within those coded color
Yes.
Areas would be, uh if we called those out each at seven foot.
Yes.
That would be satisfactory.
Yeah, that would, that would help us, thank you. And and just for, and the question I would have is, is this motion for um a approval with the condition or that the fence condition is is like this, or is it for denial? Um and you know, basically, and then how should the commission really couch this um action that they want?
To some degree, that depends on um it's it's most accurately, I think, looked at as a um approval with conditions. I I think that uh because they are allowing the fence to remain provided with certain applications.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Right. That said Resolution number twenty one oh oh seven. I would move that the uh fence heights move for approval with the fence heights being conditional to exceed six foot to seven foot um taken from the uh color coded uh schematic design, a color coded scheme that is uh in the um the staff report.
Okay.
That's very, it's about as simple as it could be said, but if anybody thinks that I need to amend that, I'm open to any suggestion.
I might recommend that you amend it to say with the condition of approval that the um fence be lowered to no more Fence be lowered to no more than seven feet as measured from the locations indicated. On that page. I'm sorry. I've forgotten which page it is.
Uh.
Page, page seven. So I would amend it to say that the fence. Yeah. Well, she said, no. So. That the fence be lowered to the elevation. According to the, to seven foot, according to the respective elevations. Guiding elevations, base elevations provided on page seven on the staff report.
Right. I think that, that works. And I think by implication, as I mentioned, I think that drawing that Phil had was a little bit of a. Truncated, there's one more spot elevation that I think it was presented by the applicant. So. But I think that holds true. Yeah, there it is. There's one. This yellow at the bottom. Which is below seven feet. So. Okay.
Does anybody have a second?
So just to, I'm, I'm sorry, just to, just to clarify, I'm just pointing out in, in certain locations, the fence will be increasing in height.
No, 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 it, it doesn't.
No.
No.
That's, I think you're right.
No more than.
No more than. Got it. But, but they, if they choose to, they choose to, correct?
Right. I think that's a good point.
If they, if they choose to increase the height of the fence in certain locations, they can per this, per the. Motion.
No, I, I think it would be only, only where it's currently exceeds seven feet. It's lowering the height. It's lowering the height.
Adam.
Yes.
It should be that it's no more than seven feet. Those sections of the fence below seven feet will remain as is.
Yeah.
Because if we are going to encourage them to make it taller, I, you lose my support.
No, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Does the commission agree on that amendment to the bump, to the motion?
Need a second with that amendment. No second?
I'll make a second.
Okay.
I think we're going to end up with a situation that both parties are unhappy with. And we may end up with a fence that is not as attractive as the fence is now, but I will make the second.
Okay. Thank you. I'll call the, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel.
No.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Reluctantly, yes.
And Chairman Chase.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes and. The, Phil, I think you should really, since it was an approval, we should read the appeal rights.
Yes, thank you. So all actions taken by the commission can be appealed. Appeal needs to be filed with the town of Coordundara within 10 days of today's date. There's a $300 filing fee for an appeal. And that appeal would go to the town council. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. It's been arduous for all of you. So I appreciate your patience in getting through this. Thank you. So we can end this item on the agenda. Everybody's can all go to bed.
Thank you.
Okay. We, we will move on to other business now. So. It was my job to report on last week's. Commission meeting, I believe. Was it mine? Yes. So. I left my staff report at home, but I know that. This, this, the town hall was before the council and it ended up being a, a long discussion, but a discussion where. Eli took over the. Final. Declaration of the. We have no attendees, so that's okay. But I, I don't know quite how to couch what Eli was after here at the end of all this. So he wants to build a different town hall.
Yeah. Yes.
I would just catch it as there were some comments at the end by the mayor, sort of after some of the other council members expressed, you know, the. Support for the project and the work that the planning commission did in the process and the design of, of. By the, the, the team, the design team that there could be some potential. Tweaks to the roof design, and he'd like to discuss that further.
So where does this go from here? That's what I don't know.
Well, I, I'd rather, you know, it's, we'll, we'll have a discussion and just, you know, there's no determination unnecessarily if there's more process. But obviously I think the majority of the council expressed a desire to move forward, but certainly there's. An opportunity to continue to have discussions about the design as we move forward. So I'll just leave it with that. There's no.
Okay.
There's no defined, no defined process at this point or any. Defined sort of request.
Okay. I'm going to send you my, my photo collection of shaved off. Hipper design. Okay.
Okay.
Beyond that. Adam, what do you have to report on?
Well. You know, there's, we did, I mentioned this earlier today. I don't know, but we, we did. For in-person meetings this last week. So just a, it's not really a planning commission related item. And we are implementing this week, a new permit. Tracking. Cloud-based software. So that is a big, a lot of big activities going on right now. And, and just more administration, but I think you, actually that's going to be a big. Improvement for all of you to be able to look and see what's active and all the things that are different planning applications and our residents and as well, we'll get a lot of utility. Utility out of that. Once we turn on the, the public facing side of it, we're just not there yet. We're still have a lot of work to do to. Get, get it, get comfortable with it ourselves. So. But expect that in another month and then, and then. If Rob and, if anybody wants to, to go out Paradise Drive. Rob and Drive, that project is well, just today, they had heavy machinery out there today, sort of. Doing, starting grading activities. So that is going to be a, a big residential project in the next. Over the next 18 months or so. And a lot of activity out there. So I guess that's, that's kind of, that's all I have and. Appreciate you, you know. I guess just the commission working through this, this one. These aren't easy, easy situations for you to be in the middle of. So we've all tried our best.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's not helpful. As, as, as Bob was saying, your party will go home happy, but maybe that's the right ending. I don't know.
So. Anyways, that, that's, that's all I have to report.
Okay.
At this time.
All right. We don't have any, we do have meeting minutes to discuss. So, no, we don't. Right. So here it is.
We don't.
Yeah.
See any.
Here we are at nine 20 and we listened to a lot. I, I'm appreciative of everybody sort of. Slogging through that. I decided that because there was really no public comment that we would let both the applicants and the neighbors have their say. For a full bore 15 minutes on each side, which was kind of unusual. I don't know that I would do that for most applications, but. There's a tremendous amount of history here and I thought it really deserved the airing that it got tonight. So. Thank you guys for sitting through it and paying attention. But I, I would follow up offline with other commentary about the rights and wrongs done there, but this is not the forum for that.
Okay.
I think it was appropriate. Peter, for you to let everybody have their say. We had the time and. I think it was a good idea.
Phyllis.
Yeah. A question for Adam. Is staff going to go out to 438 and 440? Before anything is done and measure it and let them know where it's supposed to be or wait until they do it and go out there and find out they didn't follow the. Rules once again.
Uh, that's a good question. Go ahead, Phil.
My recommendation is we will require them to submit plans showing how they're going to modify the fence.
Oh, yes.
Give us drawings.
They have to approve first before you do anything.
We will, we either approve or deny the plans. And once they're approved, and then they will do the work and then we'll go out there and inspect it, make sure they did it for the plan.
Okay. I want to be sure they don't make some changes and yet it still doesn't match because this is probably one of the hardest yes votes I ever gave and really. Didn't want to, but felt that as long as we can make some progress to go ahead.
Okay. All right. So with that said, at nine 22, I'm going to say let's adjourn this meeting. So thank you very much.
Is there any news about, one thing, Peter, I understand that the counter is opening up now.
Yeah, I mentioned, you know, we have in-person meetings are, are available for the public Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And it's, you just go on our website and, and you can make an appointment.
And, and is there any news about opening up the council chambers? No.
Not that I have. No. No, still being worked on. I mean, I think I, I, my, my get, we, my guess is my understanding is that. We should, the target's September, but I'm not exactly sure if we're going to make that, that target.
I just want to point out that the counter at the town center has been open throughout the pandemic and I've eaten there a couple of times.
I just got a coupon for that one, too.
All right. Thanks for the light ending for the meeting. I appreciate that.
Be me too.
I might go get a burger. They, they still open. Let's go find out. I don't know.
All right. Thank you guys. Good night.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.